We will now follow the meeting of the Waco City Council on June 4th, 2024 to order at 3:02 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. There, before we get started today, I want to recognize, you know, we just got through our wettest month on record in May, rained 15 inches, which is amazing. And we had some big storms last Thursday and Friday, four inches just right there. A lot of downed trees, power outages and flooding. And there were, I took this data down, 16,000 Encore customers in McClain County were affected, but didn't have electricity. I was one of those. 180 locations of downed trees. Some, most of them, a lot of them blocking major streets. So it was, it was a major storm from the fact that it created a lot of disruption. In two days, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a lot of businesses were closed. And particularly refrigerated inventory had to be thrown out. So it was, it was a big deal for, for this weekend. But I just want to give a quick shout out to the various teams from the city and other public service providers who were once again up to the task this past weekend. And it gives me great comfort knowing we have high quality public servants in our police department, our fire department, our emergency management, public works, parks, utilities, communications, and other departments working to ensure Wacoans are safe. And I would also be remiss, I see Michael Baldwin out here today with Encore. I want to give you all a big thank you at Encore for working across the state to get the power outages cleared as fast as possible. So anyway, everybody coming together to, to make it work. We'll start this meeting to recognize work session speakers. We have the opportunity here for public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors' portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearing, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items a speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to the council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a work session agenda item? I do not see any. Seeing no one is registered to speak, we'll now recess to regular session, convene to work session with a report from city manager Bradley Ford.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon. Want to take a few minutes on the city manager report. I won't take much time, but I did want to do two employee recognition introductions. We have two key staff members that have been recently added to the team. Wanted to make sure the council has met them as well as the public is aware of them as well. And that is our chief economic development officer Danny Chavez, who's up here in front left. Danny joined us on May 13th. He's got an outstanding history, career in economic development, both domestically and internationally. He's worked on some innovative projects in Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, as well as in Charlotte, working on headquarters recruitment, software, cybersecurity, mixed-use developments. He has a track record of over $2 billion worth of private investment and about 8,000 jobs under his leadership. He is a graduate of Angelo State, the Rams, I think is what they are. Is that right? Yeah. Bachelor's degree in political science. In 2021, he was named one of the top 50 economic developers in North America. And in 2022, was featured by DCEO magazine as one of the most influential executives in North Texas. Got an innovative approach, forward-thinking approach. I'm excited to have him on the team. He's definitely been hitting the ground running as well. And definitely look forward to his influence on our community. I'd be remiss if I didn't, or remiss if I didn't acknowledge, Jeremy Pacino's in the room as well. Jeremy's back here in the left. Jeremy served as our interim economic development director for the past six months, starting in the fall, and really did an outstanding job. So I'm looking forward to Jeremy growing in our organization as well. And certainly looking forward to Danny having an impact, implementing the policies of the council in economic development.
Great. You have another one?
I have a second one, but.
I'll just do these one, and I'll lay the praise on one at a time. Danny, welcome to the, to the group here. And I've seen your very impressive resume in addition to what Bradley read there. And the hallmark of this council has been economic development is a pretty high priority because of the ripple effect, the positive ripple effect that it creates across the city. So you're going to hit the ground running, as Bradley said. And when I started making out a list of the economic development projects we have going on here, as I've taken over this position, I thought I'd have a page or two, but I went through six pages of single spaced, you know, eight font stuff. So it's, it's exciting to have you to help us organize everything and keep it on track and, and keep it going, keep it growing. Also, Jeremy, shout out to you. Some of the stuff that you did on the technology side of this, I've never seen before. And it was just super. And hope we can keep that going. Got a great team going, Bradley.
Thanks, Mayor. Our next intro we want to do is our new chief financial officer, CFO slash assistant city manager, and it's Blue Kosteluk. He's back in the back. Thanks. Yep, Blue's back in the back. Joins us from Lubbock, actually. We're not going to hold that against him.
Maybe.
Right? He doesn't do guns up, so we appreciate that because our bear claw will take care of that. Yeah, he joins us from Lubbock. He's got 18 years in public sector and corporate sector experience in finance and operational roles. He's the president-elect of the Government Finance Officers Association of Texas and has held leaderships in that organization for several years. We're excited to have Blue on the team. He is a graduate of the United States Military Academy at West Point. I don't know what their mascot is.
Cadence?
Black Knight.
Black Knight.
Of course. I knew that. I knew that. Missed it. His MBA with a specialization in finance from SMU. Very decorated time of service, serving in the military. And I think he's going to have an outstanding impact on our organization in regards to financial stewardship and dedication to public service. Over the next 10 to 12 months, I will be adding departments to Blue's portfolio. We're going to start him out with finance and budget to start. Over the next 10 months or so, we'll add more pieces to his portfolio. I want to say a special thanks to Paul Kane back there. He has stepped in mightily to serve as our CFO in addition to his normal duties as ACM over the last six months or so, as well as formed a budget team by bringing on resources from other departments. And so Blue and Paul have a lot of notes to share about where we're headed on the budget, which will be filed in about a month. But definitely welcome, Blue. Welcome, Danny. Y'all got a big, big jobs ahead of you, but I know you're up for it.
Yeah, welcome, Blue. I'll just echo Bradley's sentiment there. As long as you include budget comps and year-over-year and some Gantt charts, I will be very happy. But no, we've done a lot of work and Paul running that, that group with, with Nick in, over the past couple of years, really have made great strides to me in reporting and kind of condensing some of the quarterly reports we get here in, in council. So I'm looking forward to working with you on, on budgeting and accounting. Thanks, Bradley.
All right. We've got three informal reports on your agenda today, council. First one is IR 393, which is the quarterly report of plating activity from the plan commission. We have IR 394, which provides a history of our animal shelter surrender fee and programs. 394 is, is in response partially to a citizen who spoke at our last council meeting. And I am looking over the next few weeks to get input from you on the potential options that we've listed in that informal report. I will note that the changes that are referenced are going to be included in your proposed fee schedule for the next budget year. So we'll also have opportunities to discuss it at future budget audit meetings, as well as when I present my budget in early July, if you're not prepared to discuss it tonight. Lastly, of IR 395, which provides a history and detailed narrative surrounding the July 26 dog shooting incident and our media communication afterwards. Again, this is in reference to a response to resident feedback at the last council meeting. We thought it'd be helpful if the council and public saw a full picture and record of what happened. We have six public hearings on the agenda today. I think we'll have time for Clint Peters to discuss those in the work session. If not, he'll provide that briefing in the business session later. We have 27 resolutions today. In consideration of time, I'm not going to be highlighting any particular, but we'll take any questions from the council if you've got any.
I just noticed there was about half of these were grants this week. And I just appreciate staff's efforts in looking for ways to cut costs and take advantage of federal grants and state grants. And a lot of these are zero match grants too, which is fantastic, where that, that, that money comes in from federal and state without the city having to come out of anything in its general budget. Some of those are in kind with like office space and stuff. And you guys are doing a great job in maximizing the value of these grants. Appreciate it.
And I'll just add to that, in that same sentiment for resolution 425, the Texas small urban allocations for bus and bus facilities, the city of Waco came away with far and away the largest allocation for that. So just kudos to our team and working to put that together. And it's really cool to, you know, see us against, I know council member Biffield hates the term peer cities because.
There's no such thing.
Exactly. But against cities that the federal government might acknowledge as comparable to ours. And yet they still see the value in giving us hundreds of thousands of more dollars than they give the other cities for our transit programs. So thanks for that.
And Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, just the, for resolution 413, I, I will say it is appreciated if we are going to reject all proposals for the steam consultant if it wasn't the right one. This is a tremendous opportunity asset facility for our city, for our citizens, for our residents, both young and old. And I am adamant about getting it right. And I know that our, our staff, specifically deputy city manager Emerson, is adamant about getting it right. So I don't count this as a delay. It is just a part of the process with full understanding that even though we're still working this thing out, we will be advancing steam programming throughout our summer, engaging opportunities with both our libraries and our parks, community centers. So we are moving forward and still bringing the opportunities for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics for our community. And we'll just keep trudging until we find the right one.
Agreed. Thanks, Councilmember Bifffield.
I failed to mention, you have seven ordinances on your agenda. There's only one first reading, and I figured councilmember Borderwood might want to talk about ordinance 438, which is our new city seal.
I'm excited about our new city seal. I want to thank, I want to thank our city secretary, Michelle Hicks, for her work, her collaborative work, as well as our communications and marketing team in kind of redesigning and refreshing our city seal, which was maybe not the most impressive design. Pretty simple. And so we were looking at enshrining the flying W on the city seal as we have with our flag as well, as kind of the permanent symbolism of the city. It's a, it's a design that is not unfamiliar. It's, it's similar to the current branding we have for various departments. And it's got that beautiful W on it. It's also a symbol that you've probably seen 1,000 times on manhole covers where the design just happens to be as well around our city. But it's, it's a timeless look, and I'm looking forward to enshrining that as well in our ordinances and our kind of documentary record to the city secretary's office.
And council, that concludes my report. And take any questions you have of me.
Any questions for city manager Ford? We'll now talk about the consent agenda. Is that right? Next. Yes? I believe that's correct. The consent agenda will include resolutions 2024-411 through resolutions 2024-437. Are there any items the council would like to remove from this consent agenda? All right. We will go, the next item on the agenda is work session items 2024-396 through 2024-399. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
One is a discussion, the Cameron Park Zoo public art donation request. We've got Brendan Wiley, our director of the Cameron Park Zoo, coming up, as well as Stephanie Wheat Johnson of Creative Waco. Come on up and have a seat. Yeah. They're going to give us a presentation talking about the process and design recommendations for a really outstanding piece of art that will be installed at the soon-to-be-opened Gloria and FM Young Penguin Shores project. Why don't y'all introduce it?
Thank you, city manager, mayor, members of the council. This is an incredible opportunity that we get to be here tonight to talk about a process that has resulted in just an amazing collaborative experience. Before I introduce, Stephanie, would like to recognize the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society Executive Director, Kristi Webb, is in the audience. And this presentation is leading to the agenda this evening that will ask for your approval of a design for artwork at the Gloria and FM Penguin Shores exhibit at the Cameron Park Zoo that has been designed by Creative Waco's Art Prentice ship program and that is funded through a process of grants that Creative Waco has received, as well as a contribution from the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society. So with that, it is my pleasure to introduce Stephanie Wheat Johnson, Creative Waco's Director of the Art Prentice Ship Program.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley, for your kind introduction and your warm support. Good afternoon, Mayor Holmes, council members, and city management team. I so appreciate the support that has been lended to Creative Waco and to my program, Art Prentice Ship, as we've prepared for this presentation today. We're excited to share a project brief and final design, as Mr. Wiley has mentioned. I've been privileged to lead and develop and lead the Art Prentice Ship Program for Creative Waco now for six years. And you'll forgive me, I don't know. Oh, there we go. So as you can see, we've got some of our wonderful apprentices working on the screen here. This presentation will highlight how the Art Prentice Ship Program serves the young creatives of our city and county. And I'm delighted to have our AP 24 cohort with us today as well. We will be sharing about our program and the partnership we've developed with Cameron Park Zoo and the Zoological and Botanical Society and all of its stakeholders. And we'll also be revealing the final artwork intended for the new Penguin Shores exhibit and mapping out our intended next steps. I just want to say I really appreciate coming into this room today and knowing and seeing so many people that I see throughout my community that I've had now for 10 years in the city of Waco and how well-supported Creative Waco feels at times and how my apprentices at Art Prentice Ship have gotten to know many of you. Thank you for that. All right. So for those who are maybe a little less familiar with Art Prentice Ship, as I mentioned, we were established in 2018 with Creative Waco. With the support of many city leaders and local organizations and businesses, we began a pilot project based on a Cincinnati program called Art Works. Our byline is opportunities for young creatives and beauty for our city. And through this lens, with our apprentices at the center, we walk out the values of Creative Waco by empowering those young artists and their mentors to deepen their skills, connect with their community, and have hands-on experience with the impact public art can make. Over the last six years, as you can see on the screen, we've hired 98 young creatives into the program, and we've engaged 34 professional artist mentors. You can also see some of the other numbers there that we're really proud of. We've continued relationships with many of our past alumni, and we're privileged to witness their growth in our community. If young artists are at the center, and we have our creative team and organization around them, the next concentric circle outward is a diverse layer of local organizations, businesses, city and academic leaders who speak into the program. When we then are fortunate to partner with and build relationships with mural wall donors, sponsors, and so on, who see the value of investing in the future of our creative economy and community at large. So, Mr. Holmes, as you said, those are ripple effects in our creative economy. Not every apprentice or mentor will go on to seek a career in full-time art, but all of them will carry forth the values and impact of their work and continue to use their creative lens and leadership skills wherever they go. I'd love to share a couple of quotes you can see here on the screen and in the presentation. One, the first there is from Talia Tran. She was a Waco High student. We were very privileged to have her a couple of years in the program. And she has gone on to study art at UT Austin. We keep in touch with her regularly. She is just one of many voices in our program who stay in touch, who volunteer for Creative Waco, and who we see and celebrate throughout our community. And then you'll see below that a quote from Philip Alschadel, of Rad Lab Design. Many of us have gotten to know Rad Lab and all of the moving parts of the Hotel Herringbone and that development over the past couple of years. And we deeply appreciate that they partnered with us last year and empowered our young creatives to make some beautiful mural work on that new development. And so we come to 2024. At the beginning of this year, our CEO Fiona Bond and I began a conversation with Kristi Webb of the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society, and then Brendan Wiley of the Cameron Park Zoo, along with their team, about partnering for the summer of 2024. We know there's been just a little excitement about some black and white new residents that are coming into this space. And I tell you what, I've had growing excitement ever since, honestly. We walked through the typical process that we do for Art Prentice Ship, where we engaged with our partners, had some good discussions about what they had done so far, and how we could help them attain their goals from a design standpoint. The memorandum of understanding was signed in March of 2024. And as we typically do, we set out a design brief and started to work from there. There are three key areas that we identified for mural work, which you will see. As you can see, excuse me, on the screen here, we had a design review panel that included a couple of our wonderful council members, Andrea Bearfield and Darius Ewing, as well as our assistant city manager, Lisa Blackman, and of course Brendan Wiley, and then the executive director of the Zoological Botanical Society, Kristi Webb. And then we were very blessed to have some perspective from a couple of local Waco residents who are from Southern Africa, Andreas de Loomis, and then Bronwyn Forbay, who is a former Creative Waco board member. And I will identify myself humbly in this category, as well as Zimbabwe, which is north of South Africa, is my home country. It was a pleasure to work with all these people and get their input and feedback. Thank you so much. I've included here an image. This is an architectural rendering, to be clear. This is some, some of the things that the zoo provided us as we began our design brief. But just to give you an idea of at least what the entrance of the Penguin Shores exhibit will look like. Here, as you can see, we had some design goals we set. As this is a professional development training program, we walk our apprentices through best practices of a client artist relationship and work through a design brief for every mural or creative project that we execute. Our primary focus for the apprentices was discovered through research and guidance with their mentors. And the story was one of resilience, the interconnectedness of all life, and the deep and meaningful cultural heritage of South Africa, and the significance of a wildlife conservancy. I have a lot of gratitude towards all of our stakeholders who spoke into the process, provided us a lot of insight into how the zoo functions, how they view themselves as a piece of ecological and wildlife conservancy. And of course, we are equally excited about how we were able to introduce our apprentices to the wildlife and the culture of South Africa. As you can see, we have some key things that we just kind of pulled out there on the screen so that people understand these are the things that the apprentice is considered. So it lies a little bit with sort of the aesthetic values, so things like art that moves the eye across the entire space, makes the guests feel welcome, but also a reflection, as we said, of the Cape Penguins, and that it should be unique and sensitive to the visual standards of Cameron Park Zoo. And one of the things that you can already see even in this early image of them during construction is there's already bold and vibrant color and pattern, which was a lot of fun for our apprentices to play with. I'm sharing here our timeline that we've kind of mapped out. Art Prentice Ship itself is divided into a few different components. This is the public art or mural component. And there are companion projects designed to highlight the skills of our apprentices and challenge them to grow. This year, with our intensive design workshops behind us, we will focus next on mural execution. Once we've wrapped the mural process, the other two projects described here will be completed. Over the run of the eight-week program, our media and content apprentices will also document the process and meet deliverables as well that will add to their portfolios. Each of our apprentices are not only paid for their work, but as they walk away from the program, they will have our references behind them, and they will have pieces to add to their own personal portfolios. We've, from the beginning of Art Prentice Ship, loved that this is something where they literally have a piece of Waco that they can touch and say, I was a part of this. And I love that we will have that right in the middle of our beautiful zoo. As you can see, we have some select, once the, excuse me. As you can see, we have some dates up here. After the design process and review, we have safety, training, and prep, which we just completed. Today is our presentation, and then mural execution. In July, we have two complimentary projects, the collaborative art exhibition that we've developed over the last few years. It's a tradition of the program and allows our apprentices to show off their fine art skills. And then we are very fortunate to be partnering with Will Suarez of Cendero Provisions. He will be guiding some of our apprentices through a graphic design process that will result in a textile design inspired by the mural work. Our apprentices have their exit interviews and their payday on July 20th. So that's of note. And then I think after that, once the zoo lets us know, we will have a mural wrap celebration whenever their calendar provides us that time. All right. Just sharing here briefly, the investment reflected in this project. At the moment, you can see the overall program cost is at about $95,000. And we are very fortunate to have funding from a number of generous donors, as well as granting from local and national foundations. And at this point, no funds are requested from the city of Waco.
I think that's the first time I've heard that phrase uttered from that, from that spot. So thank you. Great work.
I am delighted to utter those words for you, sir. Again, here's one of the architectural renderings that we were provided. This is not our artwork, but the architects. But I wanted to show it to you right before we present the actual designs. As you can see, when you enter the space, there are two rondobles, the hut-like structures. To the right, one will be a restroom facility, and the other will be a kiosk that I believe will be a gift shop. Behind that, you can see that there is an access gate, and there is another one that will be off to the left that you can't see per se on this slide. You'll also notice that there, excuse me, there are some beautiful wooden poles and tree trunk-like structures with a shade structure there. We will be tasked with decorating those as well. And now I'm delighted to share the final designs for this project, co-designed by our apprentices and lead designer, Will Suarez. So as you can see here, in responding to the design brief, our apprentices were challenged by Mr. Suarez to really dive deep into some of the patterns and textures and colors from South Africa. We learned. We learned about tribal designs and how they were often placed on earth and dwellings, huts, et cetera. We learned about the Indebeli tribes, and of course, about the beadwork that is so prevalent in that part of Southern Africa as well. The king protea, that is the floral motif you're seeing there, represents bounty, beauty, and diversity of the Cape region. Beadwork mandalas reflect the centuries-old artistic traditions of South Africa, as well as the universal and meditative symbolism of circular patterns, something that can be seen around the world. Color palette ties into the existing floramandala design under the shade structure at Penguin Shores, and it also tells the story of South Africa through the colors of its flag. Throughout the designs, you will see the footprints of the Cape Penguins, as well as their neighbor, the black-footed cat. These patterns draw guest size across the space and tells the story of global migration and conservation efforts. There are two rondobles, so each design will adapt to the square footage and layout of each. So this is just a rendering for you to see it in a sort of flat presentation. And then these are the designs for the access gates and the pole or wooden post patterns. These are examples of each, which have the patterned motifs flowing over the access gates. And the wooden post patterns invite guests to appreciate the natural texture of the wood and to connect the story of the exhibit's residents. Right, request and next steps. So, once more, I'm delighted and honored to represent Art Apprenticeship 2024 and our cohort and all the creatives who spoke into this design. If I haven't made it clear before, this year, we did our design process within three intensive workshops in May. So we asked high school juniors and seniors to give up their Saturdays in the final month of their school year and come join us to talk about all of this wonderful stuff. Each of them developed different elements, and Mr. Suarez was able to pull it into a design in a tight timeframe. So I want to express my appreciation for their full participation. So our next steps here that I have highlighted, we asked for the city council consideration of approval for the final designs. Mural work will be scheduled to begin immediately, and the completion will be June 29th. City of Waco and Zoological and Botanical Society's leadership and staff, all of you guys are invited to join our apprenticeship team for our Community Paint Day on June 22nd. This will be a Saturday where we invite the community in, and you can even put some paint on the walls with guidance from our apprentices. We'll be delighted to welcome you there, show you around a little bit. And then we will have a final walkthrough so everyone can see the designs executed on June 27th. Creative Waco and the Art Apprenticeship team look forward to celebrating the opening of Penguin Shores. Believe me, I think we're counting down the days even though we don't know the final date. There's a lot of anticipation, but we're very excited about the new residents of Cameron Park Zoo.
And before we stand for questions, I get to do the most fun part of this presentation. We have some guests in the house. And if we could get the 2024 apprentices to stand for a moment. Penguin Shores, as it stands today, is a beautiful creation. But what these apprentices are going to do is they're going to complete it. And over the past few weeks, it's been a true honor to watch their creativity, their collaboration that led to this design. On behalf of my role with the city of Waco, of the Cameron Park Zoo, of the Cameron Park Zoological and Botanical Society, we could not be more thrilled to work with each and every one of you and get to watch this vision come to life.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holmes, City Manager Ford, Assistant City Manager Lisa Blackman, and all of our esteemed council members for your attention. Thank you, Brendan, for your kind words. I will echo also deep gratitude, not only to our apprentices, but the wonderful mentors who have guided them so far and who will make sure that we bring this design home. Our team is delighted to answer your questions at this time.
Any questions or comments?
I don't necessarily have questions. I'm, thank you, Stephanie, for this wonderful presentation. Murals are important in our community, they have been. I am incredibly pleased to have been the district in some of the first Art Apprenticeship murals and watching every year the amazing talent that is delivered across our city is just fantastic. I am so excited about this new group of young people who will have an opportunity to make their mark on a new part of our city, something that our community as a whole came together to decide was going to happen. And as the doors open for that, the doors will be looking at your work. So wherever you go, from today and tomorrow, you'll know that you've made an impact on this city and this community. So we thank you for that. I think that the direction is amazing. I think that the colors will be vibrant. It'll pick up on, I can't wait for people to, yes, we gonna see the tuxedoed animals and the black-footed cat. But, I mean, there're gonna be parties there, there'll be weddings there. There'll be all kinds of things that will operate in this space. And it's gonna be made just a little bit better because of this. So congratulate yourselves on the work that you will do, no pressure. And I'm just super excited to see this program grow and grow. Thank you, Creative Waco. I think we've had a, you named a whole bunch of people. There are a whole lot of staff in this building that, that touched this project that may not have been named. So I'm grateful for their input as well. And I will close my comments by wishing you a happy birthday.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll jump in and just, man, thank you guys so much for, for putting this all together for us today. I said this on our review call, but we are so fortunate as a city to have an organization like Creative Waco and a program like Art Apprenticeship, that anytime we need any sort of public art for our city, we know who to go out to bid for, so to speak, and you guys always deliver. So I'm so thankful for that. And then I just wanted to touch on a point you made about, you know, this living in the community where a lot of the artists and the high schoolers live and being able to see that. When I left high school and came to college, for some reason, a jersey of mine was put on the wall at a donut shop, and I made my wife sick every time we went back to my hometown because I would like stop at that donut shop and point it out. And it is my hope to all in the Art Apprenticeship program that you make your friends and families just sick of going to the zoo and the Penguin exhibit because you get to point out the amazing work that you got to be a part of. And this is so permanent and so beautiful, and just a reminder of your hard work and dedication. Wherever you go and wherever you go on to do, I'm sure it's gonna be amazing. But anytime that you're in Waco or come back to the Cameron Park Zoo, you get a chance to look at something you gotta be a part of for forever. So kudos to you guys on that, this is awesome.
Yeah, I'll just echo everything that Councilmember Bearfield and Mayor Protam Ewing have said here. But Kristi Webb, thanks again for being here today, the Zoological Society Director. And Director Wiley, you've only been here for a few months. Seems like you've been there forever, so much stuff has happened since you've been here. But we had our meeting last week for the Cameron Park Advisory Board meeting. We've got a good update on the progress of this entire project and the Penguin Shores and the construction. It's exciting to see it kind of coming together, just the bricks and mortar and the pathways and some of the landscape. But really, super excited about, this thing becomes more than bricks and mortar and walls and space. It becomes, it comes alive with, with the work that we're doing here. And I love the, I love teamwork. Anytime there's teamwork involved in something, I love that. And we see great collaboration here between the city and the society and Creative Waco and Art Apprenticeship. And really excited to see these young men and women get involved here. Because, and I appreciate, I'm talking to you guys in that row or two rows there. You guys are fantastic. You guys could be at home watching TV or hanging out with friends, but you're actually making this community a better place. And everybody in the world is gonna see your work because the Cameron Park Zoo is one of the, one of the top two or three things to do in Waco. So as they're coming to our city, they're gonna see what you've done and what you've done there at the zoo. So really appreciate your work there. And finally, I just want to say, I like the, the design. That's what we're gonna be voting on here tonight. The South African origins, how you're kind of keeping the theme there and thoughtful design, very inviting. And if Councilmember Bearfield says it's a good design, I'm gonna be definitely voting yes tonight. Mayor Protam Ewing, I'm not so sure, but. Anyway, thank you for a great presentation. And again, thank you, young men and women, for helping this city become a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Bradley Ford will introduce the next speaker.
My pleasure. Work session 397 is a discussion of convention and visitor's spring update, hotel activity, convention bookings, attendance at tourism attractions, as well as our calendar year update of Waco Regional Airport's performance and strategic initiatives. We've got a talented group of folks that just joined us at the table. I'll start from my left. You've got Hoel Martinez, our Director of Aviation. In the middle there is Cindy Decker of Symphony by Tourism Economics. And on the right is Lisa Blackman, Assistant City Manager. Will be providing us an update on all sorts of national and local insights and trends related to travel, hotel, and lodging. Lisa?
Thank you, City Manager Ford. So hello, Mayor and Council. Lisa Blackman here, Assistant City Manager. And we're here with the team to provide, as Mr. Ford said, tourism and travel update. I'm honored to introduce Cindy Decker to my right. She is the Senior Manager of Client Relations and Insights at Tourism Economics. Prior to Tourism Economics, Cindy served for seven years as Vice President of Business Intelligence and Market Strategy for Houston First Corporation, also known as Visit Houston, which is their CVB DMO. And prior to that, she served as Revenue Management Leader for Marriott. We contracted with Tourism Economics using their Symphony platform to better understand how Waco ranks in the market at the state and national level. Tourism Economics is a national economics company that works with tourism organizations throughout the world. And Symphony is their system that integrates all the data into one platform to help us make strategic decisions for our tourism industry. So Cindy will provide the tourism and travel update. Aviation Director Hoel Martinez will provide the airport update. And with that, I'll hand it over to Cindy.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here with you guys today. Thank you for having me. I wanted to give you kind of a brief update of what's happening in the tourism industry in the U.S., a little bit of what's going on in Texas, and then how Waco fares and all of that. You know, Waco has been, for a long time, a growing market in the tourism industry. And I'm excited to share some of the insights that we found for you. So overall, U.S. travel, right now, we have indicators that we look at for travel spending, passengers, overseas international travel into the market, hotel data, short-term rental data throughout the U.S. And there is a little bit of a lag in the information, so we only have it through March right now. We will start working with putting together a monthly report for you all so that you all can see it on a monthly basis. But as you can see, right now for the U.S., year-to-date, travel spending is ahead by 1.4%. Air passenger travels ahead almost 8% year-over-year. Overseas arrivals has increased to 25%. And although overseas arrivals is still lagging a little bit, Texas is actually one of the states where overseas travel has almost recovered, largely because our biggest international market is Mexico. Hotel demand is down for the U.S. right now over last year. It is still in a lot of markets ahead of 2019. So post-pandemic, it's still doing okay for a lot of markets. We will talk about how Waco is doing in faring right now through the last couple of months. And short-term rental is definitely still growing. It's been one of those markets where people have used more and more, especially through the pandemic. People started to check into a home or into an apartment instead of checking into a hotel. Particularly, more family travel is doing that. We are continuing to see that trend throughout the U.S. So if you look at overall Texas versus the U.S., in jobs and passengers and hotel demand, we're seeing very similar trends. The U.S. lodging sector and jobs is ahead of last year by almost 3% with air passengers growing, as we said, almost 8%. And hotel demand is down just slightly at 1.4%. Well, Texas is ahead in jobs by 2.5%. Air passengers into Texas has increased by 8.7%, so slightly higher than the U.S. average. And hotel demand is actually decreasing slightly more by 2.1%. But Texas has had an unforeseen amount of rain, as the mayor mentioned earlier, a lot of tornadoes, a lot of very unexpected weather. And also, keep in mind that through March, Easter fell into the first quarter versus last year, it was in the second quarter. So that has affected the Texas market a little bit more than it has the U.S.
Both of those char, depictions are year-to-date, year-over-year, right?
Correct.
Not just month.
Through March.
Right, got it.
And then here is kind of a trend of just overall lodging demand trends. We get this information from Smith Travel Research. We look at Texas versus the U.S., you can see how Texas, starting last year, was recovering faster than the U.S. And did that all of last year. And then starting in December, it started to drop. The trend started to slow down a little bit through this first quarter. It's, the U.S. also started to drop. Texas was just dropping a little faster than everybody else. We were seeing that actually in Texas and in Florida, which were the two markets that recovered quickest after the pandemic in lodging demand. Also on rates, a lot of the hoteliers saw increased rates. So average daily rate is your ADR. But really, when we ran an analysis of it against the CPI to look at the cost and how price index was going against hotel rates, hotel rates were actually just barely keeping up with inflation and actually rising at the same rate. While in the luxury market, the hotel rates were really exceeding the Consumer Price Index, but they are starting to see a little bit of a drop this year from where they had risen back in 2022. And then here's the next quarter. So again, the first quarter was down, saw a little bit of slower demand as we went in and out of bad weather, as we saw again Easter in March. And then this quarter, we're starting to see some increases again in demand, which was great to see throughout the country. But primarily, we're gonna talk a little bit about Waco here in a minute and how you guys have kind of defied the odds in that respect. And then overall passenger throughput. So we take a look at passenger throughput, which means that it's looking at every person that goes through the security line and to get checked into an air, into a flight throughout the U.S. This is a map of the U.S. and how every state is recovering a little bit more or less than others. You can see the outside markets, California, Oregon, and the Northeast may be recovering a little bit less. The U.S. overall was seeing throughput through March as a percent to 2019, up 9.5%, while Texas was seeing a 16% increase in throughput, increase in travel. And then consumer sentiment. So as we go into this first quarter, we were starting to wonder, well, demand is down, we're seeing some awkward trends throughout the U.S. What is the consumer talking about for the next six months? Are we gonna continue to see this trend? Is this an economic downshift for the hotel industry again, or are we okay? And right now, the consumer travel sentiment is at 93%. It is the highest it has been since pre-pandemic timeframe. So definitely, the American public is ready to go. They're expecting to travel through the summer and planning travels through the next six months.
When you say 93%, is that 93% of pre-COVID average? Or is that like 7% of folks are reluctant to travel?
So Longwoods International is a survey company. They're a travel survey company. They do a survey throughout the country of travelers every month. And so they're looking at a survey of 93% of the travelers that they surveyed actually said that they had plans to travel in the next six months.
Okay, thank you.
And then looking at travel volumes. So this is information that is done by our economists. Again, Tourism Economics is at the heart of it, an economics company. And our economists are looking at business versus leisure. A lot of markets have a little bit of both. Waco is one of those markets where you have a little bit of business, a little bit of leisure, a little bit of convention travel, so you have a great mix. And in that, overall for the U.S., we were expecting to see leisure travel originally actually fully recover in 2023. As you can see, leisure travel for the U.S. recovered in 2022. 2023, it reached 102% of 2019. So we're looking at an index to 2019. And then this year, we're expecting it to be at 104%. Where business travel's taking a little bit longer to kick back in, still a lot of at-home mix, blended home and. in, still a lot of at-home mix, blended home and office travel, work. So it slowed down the business travel. So right now, they're expecting, we're expecting that by 2024, we'll be back at 95% of where we were in 2019. Some markets are a little bit higher than that. Oil and gas in Texas has certainly helped some of that. And Texas is recovering a little bit better in business travel. But overall, we'll be at 95%. And then lastly, the other thing that we looked at.
So sorry, can I ask just a point of clarification?
Yes.
I know obviously the, the reason for citing 2019 being the last year for data pre-pandemic. Were there any, just in your top-of-your-head knowledge, any years within, you know, three or four years of 2019, say back to 16 or 17, where there was greater, you know, we saw greater spikes in travel? Or just thinking of comparing it to 2019 being the last pre-pandemic year, good dataset. But if that was a down year compared to the three years before that, what does that look like? Is sort of what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so in Texas, it wasn't. Texas, the 2019 was like the high mark. Certain markets saw better years than others. I can tell you that Houston, Texas, had an amazing 2017 because they had a Super Bowl. You know, Dallas saw a little bit better in 2018 because of conventions that they had. So certain markets did a little bit better other years. But for Texas, 2019 really was the high mark. Honestly, they were expecting 2020 to be the new high mark, and we all know what happened come March. The last, you're welcome. The last thing that we looked at for information, just to see if those trends were holding true, if the demand is really truly dropping, was we looked at household means and expected increases. So again, looking at Oxford Economics and doing some research around household indicators and disposable income, most DMOs throughout the country are targeting the 100,000-a-year income traveler. That's usually a family income. That's an average of the traveler that has a little bit more disposable income to travel. And there is an increase in that segment. There is also an increase this year versus last year and expected next year to be an increase in disposable income in the trillions of dollars for independent families within the U.S. And so that helps us understand what may happen with travel. So most importantly, how's Waco doing against all that? Like I mentioned, Waco has kind of defied the odds. You're not following the U.S. trends. We're not following the Texas market. We're kind of kicking our own way through and carrying on better than everybody else. On this chart, you can see at the very top is just the month of April. In the second line, you can see year-to-date numbers through April. We start with occupancy, ADR, which is your average daily rate. RevPAR, which is something that I try to focus on a little bit more, being a hotelier, it's your revenue per available room. It is guided and shifted depending on the supply in your market. And then we look at your supply because you have had a significant amount of new hotels that have opened in your market since 2019. And then we look at your demand. So the room nights are coming into the market. And then the overall revenue. So looking at the demand times your average rate, and what does that revenue look like? And as you can see, year-to-date, the Waco market is up 26.5% in demand over 2019. When you look at the chart at the bottom, the little blue line is actually 2023. You can see that January started off a little bit slower in demand. February was a little bit higher than last year. March was actually slightly down, which is not surprising, knowing that Easter fell in this year versus April last year. And then April soared through. So not only did we not have Easter, but we had, you know, a slight solar eclipse, you know, a little minor blip on the radar for a day that did really well. But it did really well overall for the month. And you can see how far ahead you are for 2019. 2019 is that teal line in the middle, and how far ahead we are over 2019 and how successful we've been.
So I realize this is looking at April, but, and, and we did have a, a little, you know.
A little blip.
Little situation here. I wonder how, I mean, and I expect, fully expected the demand to be, you know, monumental, what like May would show. Or, I mean, because I know that's, but it's kind of an unfair month to pull out because we had a, a, you know, monumental event here. So, you know, I'm curious as to, I'm, now, all for the fact that it's higher. And we do our own thing as I, you know, we mentioned before.
And then May had its, was the wettest month on record, so that might be a rough one too, you know?
I don't, I don't have May numbers with me, but I believe when I looked at them, your May was still ahead of last year. So May is continuing to grow. And I'm going to keep going to make sure that we get it all in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I do want to show you all, I have one slide to show you on the eclipse itself.
Okay.
And it was a, it was a blip in the radar. And then you did great against versus Texas, but it was not as big of an impact as you think. So all of this demand is really truly just hotel demand in the market.
Cindy, before we go to the next slide, that supply, that's the number of rooms, right?
Correct. That's the number of rooms times the, the days. So it's 116,000 rooms, and you would divide that by 30 days in April to get the actual daily inventory.
Got it. And then demand is the same, number of rooms.
Demand is the number of rooms for that whole month. So it's daily rooms through the month.
Yep.
Correct.
Thanks.
So one of the things that we looked at on the other side is that your occupancy is down because you've had so much more supply in the market. This, again, is actually taking your daily demand and looking at it on an index against 2019 and how you, Waco really came up each individual month has been ahead of 2019 since March of 2021. You're starting to see a little bit higher peak as you go into '23 and '24, which is great. You're, you're going higher and higher. We're still having to fill some of that new supply that's in there. So that is still a, a little bit of a shortfall why the occupancy is down, but overall, still showing really great numbers. And then average rates. Waco is one of the markets that has grown the most in rate throughout the Texas area. So you can see that you're ahead by 8% over last year, and you're up 11.3% versus 2019 in rates in the market. And then revenues, again, looking at it on an index, you can see some of the spikes that you're seeing and a little bit higher spikes every month as you move forward versus 2019. And then competitively, we always want to look and see how Waco is doing against other markets in Texas. So right now, you can see, we've sorted this by RevPAR, so revenue per available room in the market. It's probably the best measurement because supply affects your numbers throughout the year. And you are currently ranked as the fifth highest in RevPAR in the state of Texas. You, the, City of Waco is up 3.4% over last year. And I want to congratulate you because you are the third highest in occupancy in the state of Texas behind Austin and Fort Worth, which is, I think, saying a lot. So congratulations to Waco. Also, short-term rentals. The same trends are happening here. So where a lot of markets are seeing increases in demand in their short-term rentals and decreases in the hotel industry, you're not seeing the same. We're seeing increases in the hotel inventory, and we're seeing increases in the demand in the short-term rentals. So families coming to Waco are not only staying in short-term rentals, but they're staying in hotels too. So you've got an ex, an increase in your overall hotel taxes because you're seeing it in both. So aggregated lodging, this is looking at overall short-term rentals and aggregated revenue from the hotel industry. You can see that in April, 21% of your lodging revenues were from short-term rentals. And short-term rentals were up 10.8% in demand while the hotels were up 3.4% in demand year-over-year. Both segments are seeing strong rates and continuing to see spikes in overall revenue.
Does that, does that chart right there show kind of some of the eclipse peak? Or is, or is that the natural rhythm?
No, that is yours. So it does show a little bit of the eclipse peak. And I will show you guys the, the exact, I did a comparison for you all on eclipse versus the same time last year.
Okay, thank you.
And then Waco attractions. So the Waco attractions are booming. You were talking about the zoo a minute ago. It is your second highest-attended attraction in the city. And your total attraction for the year is ahead by 27% over last year. It is down 3.1 from 2019. That is not a big number, right? It's a very small number compared to what we've seen over the last couple of years. And we're starting to show some really big peaks. You can see how April was really high. March also saw a large peak. So the attractions are also faring well. And I'll show you a mix. So I put together a mix for you to show each of the attractions and how they were doing overall. In 2019, Magnolia Market weighed up 56% of all of the attraction visitors to all of the attractions. Right now, they're at 55.9%. So they're almost back to their regular mix. But I want to point out the Dr. Pepper Museum. So Dr. Pepper in 2019 saw 6.4% of all of the attraction visitors. Right now, they're making up 9.2% of all of the attraction visitors. So a lot more people are wanting to see Dr. Pepper, which is exciting to see. And about 14% of your visitors go to the zoo.
Which just became the number two selling soda in the United States as well. So forces are at work here.
Yeah. If you see the Dr. Pepper Museum, you probably will grab a Dr. Pepper. So who's visiting our city? We have a lot of Texas visitors. So about 69% of your visitors come from within a 250-mile radius. Dallas-Fort Worth is your closest visitor. They visit the most. But you also have Austin, Houston, San Antonio, the Temple-Bryant area. Oklahoma City is your first out-of-state large visitor. And then Shreveport, Louisiana is also in that number. So a lot of flexibility on where you're seeing people from all over the state coming to Waco. And your top points of interest. So about 8% of the visitors are coming to Baylor University, which is your highest visited, if your point, if you put that into the mix of places to visit. The Central Texas Marketplace, 4.3% of the visitors between January and April came to the Central Marketplace. And Magnolia Market's made up 1.8%. So it's your third highest visited when you throw in the Central Texas Marketplace and Baylor University.
Does the Baylor University, is that just the campus? Does that not include? Because I see that McLean Stadium's on here, but I know that we opened a new basketball arena in January as well, and this data is going back to that. So I don't know if that's included with the Baylor University data or not.
I need to go back and look at the map for you.
Okay.
And I'll take a look, see how we mapped it and see if we mapped it separately.
Great, thanks.
And then also, your average visitor for overnight stays is 2.2 days. And then just briefly, leisure hospitality jobs in the city of Waco is 13,000 jobs. You're the 16th-highest leisure and hospitality employer in the state of Texas. And 16th. And it is up year-over-year 2%, up 7% versus 2019. The state of Texas is also up 2% year-over-year in leisure hospitality jobs, and up 9% since 2019. So definitely in good company. And both the state and Waco is ahead of leisure hospitality employment from the U.S. average. And then hotel Waco occupancy tax collections are at some of their highest that we've seen. So currently, over $681,000 that have, that have been collected, it's up 19% over last year. Hospitality tax is not collected for the month that happened. So this is not necessarily your, your May collections or your April month collections. You'll probably see an even bigger spike in May because of April being so strong in the hotel industry. And then visitor spending. Right now, your average spend per category, your highest one is accommodations. Obviously, it costs us a little bit more to spend and stay in a hotel. But the attractions is the second highest spend and then follow, or I'm sorry, retail's followed by attractions. And then accommodations makes up about 12%, while food makes up 40%. So when they come to visit, we've got to, you know, get some good food to travel. And that's your fourth-highest spend in the market. And convention city, one of the things that I'd like to point out is in the convention market, a lot of markets are seeing a slowdown in the larger conventions. Where Waco is seeing the opposite, which I think is what's helping some of our hotel here in the market. P1 is your, your priority levels for conventions are 300 to 500 peak. And those conventions and conventions that are 100 peak or more are ahead of last year. And those are larger, the larger conventions that you host. And again, a lot of other markets are showing a drop or a fall-off in those larger conventions that they have. So I think that is, I, we definitely feel that that is part of what's helping your hotel market. The last slides that I have is about your eclipse. So this is looking at a comparison of the eclipse, the exact dates of the eclipse, Friday through Monday versus those same times or some dates last year. And you can see that overall, the eclipse and revenue was up 263%, with occupancy up 31% just over those days. The biggest increase was really, it was 18 points in occupancy, but the biggest increase is over $150 rate increase year-over-year for that timeframe. So it definitely was a large blip in your radar for the market. But overall, when you look at all of the other dates of the month, it also showed some increases through the month. And then lastly, this is how Waco did against all of Texas. So Waco reached an 81% occupancy on April 8th, where Texas reached 72% occupancy. So congratulations to Waco. The rate was $40 than the average Texas rate for the day, making your RevPAR about $45 ahead of the average Texas RevPAR for the time of the eclipse. Any questions before I pass it on to our airport?
I don't have any. Cindy, this is an excellent report. I mean, there's so much data in here, and I just love it. The KPIs is well laid out. Did you say we're going to get this report on a monthly basis for one look at it?
Yes. Tourism Economics is working with Lisa and the City Department to put together a monthly report for you all. Just a consolidated version of this that you can have on a monthly basis, just emailed to you in a PDF.
And I don't, this is probably coming from a different source, but do we have any data on the hotels that are coming online? Because if you do the math, there's about 4,000 rooms, roughly, 3,900. And I don't know Bradley or Lisa, maybe you know, of the, the hotels that are coming on. I'm just curious. I can find this out, but the ones that are sort of.
Yeah, CVB keeps a running total. We'd be happy to follow back up on it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need to know the second.
With their status. And they do a good job of keeping that list going.
Great. Yeah, great report, Cindy.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I will jump into the.
You're not on both.
Nope, there we go. Is that better? I'll be right up in there. Wow. Okay. Good afternoon again. So Waco total visitors year, or year-to-date, year-over-year. Again, these are visitors. These are not employments, so don't get too excited what those numbers look like there. So again, these are travelers. We'll talk about where they're coming from. Again, the biggest number there is obviously from Texas. Again, this excludes a 50-mile radius of Waco. So employers, employees, you know, those folks don't count for multiple hits a year. But California is our second highest. And that, we'll go through, the really important numbers are employment numbers that we're looking at here as we talk about tourism and travel. Here, again, we're up about 10.67, about 10.7% compared to the last five years or over the last five years. So if you look at the green line there, we're above 2019 already. So, you know, as, as air travel, you know, is kind of, of course, we don't have May numbers in there, and that's going to be, look a lot different because of the weather that we experienced. But that's, that's very positive for our community as we, again, work into our strategic initiatives as we get through this presentation. Non-airline traffic, again, this is also something else that, that we really focus on, providing a general aviation experience. So this is basically not airline operations or airline employments. These are just your normal flight school, military aircraft, those types of, those types of aircraft operations. And you can see, again, compares for the last five years, what we look like there. Not quite as high as 20, as March. April did do, you know, didn't have as much of an impact for us at the airport. We were anticipating quite a bit for the eclipse. Again, those that were flying obviously had the option to fly to clear skies. So those numbers are what they are there. And again, like I, like I previously mentioned, our current priorities, you know, we did meet about two weeks ago with four airlines about potential, potentially starting new service here. It was very positive conversations, felt really good. The airlines have changed kind of what we've heard in years past. You know, we heard lack of pilots, lack of aircraft. So now they're like, now they're trying to identify strategically low, I guess, destinations where they can start placing some of those aircraft as they come back online. So I think we're really, you know, stayed relevant, and our numbers look really good. Continuing to foster economic development as we're attracting new businesses and looking at those opportunities at the airport as well. We're also preparing for the grand opening of Marie's Bistro in the terminal building. We awarded that contract a few months ago here. So we're looking for them in September. And then we're also looking at other opportunities to upgrade the air traffic control tower there at the airport through congressional funding opportunities there and what that looks like. And then our future update, we'll be back with this team or with this similar information in December of 2024. And do you have any questions before we conclude the presentation?
All of the sort of non-commercial airline activity that we have at the airport, that is, my understanding, that, that is revenue generating still, correct, in the use of the airport? What percentage, if you're comparing sort of that, that big tranche of non-commercial activity versus the commercial flights that we have coming in and out for revenue generation, would you say?
I can get you a more specific number, but yes, it is.
Yeah.
Revenue generating. So we collect landing fees, and then they pump fuel into, you know, their aircraft. And then we definitely collect a fuel flowage fee as well.
Okay.
But I can get you a more specific number as far as percentage goes.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'm just really curious as to, you know, what, if we have those two sort of buckets that make up our activity at the airport, you know, where's the money coming from, and how much from each of those? I'm just curious to see.
Yeah, we can definitely provide that information.
Thanks, Hoel.
Any other questions for Hoel? Hoel, great report. Appreciate it. The airport's looking good.
Thank you again.
All right, Mayor and Council, we've got time for one more work session briefing. We're gonna invite Paul Kane, Assistant City Manager, down to give our second quarter financial update and investment report. Paul's had a busy day, like all his days are busy, but this one in particular, helping with our bond sale, which happened just a couple hours ago. And so definitely appreciate Paul's time and update. He's gonna give you a quick update on the financial status. Paul?
Thank you, Bradley, and I'd like to just take a second and thank Rusty Hill, Assistant Director and Treasurer for the city. He has worked tirelessly over the last few weeks getting our bond sale together. And we had some interesting meetings last week, whether or not the market's gonna be ready for the sale today. Really bad week last week, didn't look good. Things cleared up today, so we did make sales today. Did really well. Our taxable bonds came in at about 5.5%. Our refi went through at about 3.49%. And tax-exempt COs were at 4.35. So pretty good day. Overall, we'll be getting a detailed report for you and going over that information with you at a later date. So we did pull the trigger today, and again, want to thank Rusty for some really tireless work on all of that. So I want to talk to you a little bit about our March financials. March is the halfway mark of the year. We've, as you know, we've struggled to get to a point in producing the report that was, I think, suitable, met council's expectations. I noticed that Mayor Holmes mentioned concise, and that's what this is gonna be, very concise. So let's talk about the general fund, starting off with revenues. So property taxes are projected to be a little bit below budget, about $500,000 to date. All the revenues, penalty and interest, as well as just your normal property tax payments, are about 95% of budget versus 98% this time last year. So we are gonna be a little bit lower, and it looks like we'll be lower in collections than we were before. We were at 100% for the last few years, so we'll see how that plays out in the end. We talked a lot about sales tax at the budget retreat. It is flat. As we've talked about, it's behind last year's pace through March, but it's slightly above in May. And I know this is a March report, but we did take, we're keeping track of it monthly as it comes in. So we're a little bit ahead of pace in May. Last year, we finished at 55.7 million, so projections for this year range from a low of about 54.6 to a high of 57.3 based on the different methodologies that we use. So we put it at 56.04 million, which is kind of in the median of those different scenarios. We'll certainly keep an eye on this as we move forward. Franchise fees...
But the sales tax is way ahead of budget, it looks like, through six months. The sales tax is way ahead of budget.
Actually, it's right at budget. We're thinking, last year, we finished at 55.7, budget's 55.1. We're projecting just a little bit above that, Mayor, but that's kind of tenuous at this point.
I was looking at 23 million last year, year-to-date, versus 28.4 million this year, year-to-date. Budget.
Yeah, from a budget perspective...
Sorry, not last year, yeah, from last, year-over-year, we're a little, we're right...
Last year, we were 28.5, this year, 28.7.
Exactly.
So we're...
Basically the same.
Yeah, we're basically the same.
But we're ahead of our budgets. I'm showing 23.4 for our budget through six months.
Yeah, that's a little bit different, I think, the way it actually plays out. We're actually seeing the shift. Usually, you know, you're, because of, I think, a lot of the tax exemptions, the legislature's done, so you're losing some of that back-to-school money you got in the past. So you're seeing, and even Christmas is actually shifting a little bit more towards March overall. So we're continuing to watch that, but we do think overall, the end of the year, we'll finish right at budget, maybe 500,000 to 800,000 over budget.
Great.
But that'll be really thin going forward. Our business occupation, our franchise fees are lagging a little bit lower than expected. We may have been a little ambitious last year in that account, and so we're keeping an eye on that. And as is occurring on all funds across the city, our interest earnings are 121% of budget year-to-date, and projected at 162% of budget year-end, so that's more than $2.5 million in the general fund. And in your financial, your investment report, if you had a chance to look to that, you see that we're still at about 4.35 overall interest on our investments. You know, two years ago, that was barely 1%. So we're continuing to make money on our money that's in our investment portfolio, and you'll see that reflected really across all funds. The general fund is certainly one of them where our interest earnings or investment earnings are much higher than we anticipated. So that's a good thing with some of our revenues and our other accounts lagging a bit. Our actuals in March 24, as well as our year-end projections, and this is where budget people and accounting people speak two different languages. In our adopted budget, we showed a transfer in to the general fund from surplus, and that balanced the budget from a budgetary perspective. The way accountants look at the budget is expenditures versus revenues. That transfer in's not a revenue. So in the March 24 table, or column, and in the year-end projection, those do not include that transfer or that use of fund balance. And that will be important on the next slide as we look at expenditures.
Before you switch to expenditures, is there an identifiable reason, property tax dollars are down?
We're digging into it. It looks like in some areas, there's still some things that are being contested that we're trying to see where that's gonna settle out, perhaps in large accounts, trying to see if that's an overall trend. So we're not certain yet, haven't had a chance to dig through that in detail, but it is a concern. Certainly from a budgetary perspective going forward, it has impact on the truth in taxation as well. So we're gonna try to work through that and get a better sense of where it's going.
Thank you.
Overall, expenses, actual expenses to date are about 48.6% of budget compared to 48% this time last year. So proportionally, on a similar pace as last year. Salary and wages are projected to be over budget, about 1.9 million, a little over 2%. That's really solely attributed to overtime expenses that are projected at about 2.9 million over budget. As you would expect, that's primarily in pollution and fire. And if you look at their hours a year and what they're booking for overtime, there's surely not a substantial change in the number of hours. This is reflected, the overage is reflected portion of it due to the higher pay. But also, we just haven't historically budgeted overtime where we should have. There's a built-in overtime in the fire department, as everyone knows. But there's also overtime that occurs due to vacancies, sick, those kinds of things that happen in the departments routinely. And so we're attempting to address that in the fiscal '25 budget, to budget those at actual numbers going forward. But overall, because of this offsetting savings that we're receiving from vacancies and other things, that's partially alleviated to about $1 million to the good. So again, 1.9 million overall, and a little bit over budget there. Employee benefits are about 3% or $1 million below budget. For all of our non-personnel accounts, at the mid-year point, actual expenses are, as I said earlier, 48.6% of budget versus about 48% of budget. We'll closely monitor some of the large budget items. As a matter of fact, we have a $1 million expenditure for some software that council approved last year. We're seeing where that's gonna fall, both in actual amounts and if it happens this fiscal year or next. And then transfers out to cash, CIP, that $34.2 million. That includes a $22.6 million transfer to the street capacity program that was to be offset through some of our street maintenance fee money that we did not implement. So we'll be addressing that in a budget adjustment, hopefully at the next meeting. And that will actually return some more money to the general fund in a smaller transfer to the street maintenance fund in that account. So you'll see that in the future, it will come down as well. So overall, in the general fund, our projected fund balance, as you see here, we think will exceed revenues. Expenditures will exceed revenues, about 8.4 million. That'll decrease our fund balance in the general fund. Right now, we're at about, after that transfer is made, or that drawdown is made, we'll be at about 57.9 million, which is 29.5% of our budgeted revenues. Our policy's 28, so we'll be above policy slightly, by about 2.9 million. Super excited to have Blue here. He and I were just kicking around some ideas earlier, and I know there's been concern on council's part about percentages of fund balance and policies with that regard. And so Blue has some great ideas and great experience there, so I'm sure we'll see some things from him going forward as how he might, can address some of these things and make it a little cleaner in terms of how our reserves are calculated. So super excited to have Blue on board and coming forward with some great ideas for us moving forward. Let's take a quick look at some of the other funds, and the water utility fund. Our expenses, well, first let's look at revenues. We're projected to be over budget at the end of the year. As you might expect, charges for service, those are water bills essentially. Those dollars are a substantial part of the revenues, and we're tracking to finish about where we were last year. Certainly, everybody knows that the water fund makes its money in the summer. So it'll be interesting to see what happens as we move into the hotter, drier months of the year, and if they stay hot and dry as they typically have. So we're tracking okay there on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we are projecting a bit higher than budget, about $4 million. And that's primarily due to a couple of things, and you've noticed this, I'm sure, driving around town. As the soil has gotten more and more saturated, things tend to happen with pipes in the ground as that happens. And so our maintenance of pipe and our water mains, as well as the maintenance of the streets after we do that work, both are well above budget at this point and projected to continue. We don't know how much longer that will go. I just, as a matter of fact, I just got a message a minute ago that we have a sewer line over by McLean that's having problems, and so we're seeing that every day now. The ground's very saturated, pipe tends to shift, things happen in the soil. So we expect that there will be additional expenses going forward here. So we are projecting a little bit higher revenue, expenses and revenues. However, as you see at the bottom there, our drawdown is about 2.69 million. As of 9:30, our working capital is in excess of policy of $24 million. So we certainly are in a good position with regard to working capital in the water fund to withstand some expenses exceeding our revenues. Waste water side, more stable here. The revenues are projected right at budget for year-end. Expenses actually slightly under. Again, we're looking at a drawdown of about $5 million here. Working capital is almost $24 million above policy, so the waste water fund is in good shape. And this, certainly for this year, projected to continue to be. Over in solid waste, we are continuing to do very well from a revenue standpoint, particularly due to landfill revenues. Well above budget, about $4 million. Expenses tracking just slightly ahead of budget. So we think there'll be an increase overall, or a contribution to our working capital that was about $3.5 million at the end of last year. So we'll see that bump up closer to $4 million. And that, just, we've talked a lot about this in the past, that that $4 million in excess of policy, we've already accounted for about $7.8 million foreclosure of the old landfill. That money's already reserved and booked as a liability, so this is above and beyond that. So we're tracking well in all of our major utility funds, and actually in the general fund as well. So that's a real quick discussion of our financials. We, I want to thank our accounting team upstairs at Henderson. You know, going from accounting to budget is a different transition, right? And just the way that the language you use and the way you work through things, the process that we used in the past to create the report that council likes was unique to some people who are no longer here, and so trying to recreate that has been a lot of fun. But we got good numbers here. Again, we've taken a peek at May as well, nothing surprising there. So the May report that you'll receive soon will be, I think, around the same sort of scenarios that we pointed out here today. So we feel good about where we are, we're working through the budget process as well. The investment report that's in your packet, I'll just mention that that does, is required for us to provide that to you as part of the Public Funds Investment Act here in Texas. So we must quarterly provide you that report, so that report is provided to you there. And you'll note that the Hilltop Securities, who's our agent in that regard, noted that it is compliant with both the Public Fund Investment Act as well as the council's investment policy. That's there for you as well. And as I mentioned earlier, the really highlight there is we're at about 4.35% or so percent in terms of what we're seeing in our investments. And we'll see what the market does, I guess, next week. The FOMC's meeting again, and we'll see what they do with rates. I think they're meeting 11th and 12th next week. So our interest income will continue to be higher than it has been in the past, certainly. But as the rates possibly get adjusted, that could decline for the rest of the year. We are not projecting high-interest investment earnings for '25. We don't see that continuing, so we're trying to be real careful about how we project that. That's all I have, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, and I got my man Rusty here to help me on the investment stuff if you have deep investment questions.
Really appreciate all the good work you and Rusty and your team were doing in this period of staff transition. I know that that is above and beyond kind of picking up some of the slack as you work through vacancies and filling those vacancies. So much appreciated on this good work. I know that we're not exactly dealing with the rosiest financial picture, but also not the bleakest either. And so we appreciate your good fiscal stewardship and good sound investment strategies as well. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Councilman Porter, thank you.
I just want to chime in and say, I echo that. I know that you have a lot on your plate with this, or up to this point have had that, and it's not like you're just relinquishing it all right now. So I appreciate your sort of leadership on this. And the good thing is, while we maybe, we're preparing reports for people that are no longer here in a specific way, I don't think that there is anyone on council now that likes things in a unique and specific data presentation. So it should be pretty smooth sailing from here on out. Can't imagine anyone's gonna have any holes to poke or questions to ask on your presentations.
Appreciate that.
Blue off some room.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. Appreciate all that you've done in this. And we're a fiscally conservative council, we always have been. The city has been diligent in making smart decisions as stewards of our residents' money, and we, nothing has changed regardless of people who rotate in seats. What I do want to say is to Bradley, I want you to stop for a minute and really think about the staff that you have here and the ability that all of them have had to take possession of empty seats and put on six different hats in a day and take over departments that they have no, you know, that they didn't sign up for. So what I want to do is tell our newest staff that we get it done. And, you know, we pull out all the boots, the, all of the things, and get it done. And I appreciate that. I appreciate all of you for that, because that's the only way we get this stuff done.
Y'all, I echo my fellow council members. Thanks for pulling this together, Paul, for today, because I know that we were kind of stretched thin this quarter. I don't really have anything to say on the year-to-date stuff, but I do want to mention, and I'm sure we'll get a bigger report on this at the next meeting, but it sounds like we got pretty decent execution today
We did.
on our bonds. So thanks for the team, to the team for putting all that together.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. And certainly, I want to appreciate our financial advisors and the work that they've done, really. Probably more so than any sale we've had in the time that I've been here. A lot of discussion, a lot of meetings, a lot of here's where the market is, a lot of good analysis from their team. So it's been very helpful. Thank you all.
Great, thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, we're gonna delay Clint until the business session on the review of the planning...
Mayor and Council, we're gonna delay CLINT until the business session on the review of the planning public hearing items. We've got a need for a lengthy, we've got several items for you in executive session. So if it pleases you, we could take a few-minute break and then convene for exec.
I do have a question. I know that we have the graduates today and we normally pop in for a second to see or say hello. How are we going to do that?
Their presentation runs 5:00 to 7:00.
Yeah.
So we'll need to find a moment to get over there between 5:00 and 7:00.
All right.
Okay, is that it, Bradley? All right, are there, the next item, our council request for scheduling of future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items, guys? I see none. We will now recess to executive session. We will now, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:33 PM.
And that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Francine Nix versus City of Waco, Texas, Cause Number 2021-2505, pending in the 14th Judicial Court. Personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. City Attorney Jennifer Ritchie, City Council Member for District 5. Attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. And real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. 2424 and 2516, Jackson Avenue, Waco, Texas. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Downtown development project being the mixed-use development on city-owned and adjacent properties near City Hall. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.